The Taj Mahal.
I'm happy, I'm just all by myself.
It's now six thirty, I'd like to call this City of Manassas Council Meeting of September the fourteenth to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Orchowski.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Present.
Councilman Gregor.
Here.
Mayor Mojer.
Here.
Not a quorum, present mayor, five persons.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilperson Lois Thomas to lead us in prayer.
We bow our heads just for a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you once again for this day, how you just blessed us throughout this day, and you brought us together for the business of the City of the Council of Manassas. We pray that you bind us all together on one accord, that you give us resources and knowledge and understanding in all things, that we will do what is best for the city and work together as one. Just bless us now, in Jesus' name we pray, and thank you, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like for somebody to make a motion to approve the previous session of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, the meeting minutes.
Honorable mayor, motion to approve the minutes of the previous session of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comments on agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus. All I see is a whole page, page number five, about bread and circus again. You've got Halloween, you've got trick or treat. How much has all this cost in the city?
Five hundred thousand dollars. Ernie.
Can somebody give me a point?
It's not costing the city anything.
You mean, the people and the police, they come out for free?
Yes, they volunteer their services.
Whoa, excuse me? I don't care what you believe, we do come out for free.
Every time the city does so, it's all free stuff.
Thank God that they do that. And they also, if I'm correct, and I don't want to be wrong about this, they also turn around and get other municipalities to see if they can come over and help and be part of the work.
Okay, but they're also using gas, the gas ain't free. Okay?
What, fifty bucks?
I don't know. You guys don't have money, you're not even bringing in anything.
Really?
There's nine events a year up for a city park and boat launch, if you guys don't collect the two fifty. So what's that all about?
Ernie, really?
Yeah.
Would you like me to bring up something in the past, and we'll see how that goes over real well?
This year, how much did you collect from all these activities?
What activities? They're put on for the city, for the citizens of the city. We don't do things or have an event for Christmas, you don't light the Christmas tree and see a meter go around and ask for donations.
The role of government, representative government, is to take care of your first duty.
We're not doing that?
No, you're fixing potholes? No. We just keep moving the potholes, and then we've got to go to the repair shop and get them fixed. And then you've got two buildings here, okay?
Let's get back on target, what else you got on the agenda you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, well, then you got on page two, you're going to rehash everything in the past about the sewers. Okay?
Where do you see that?
Well, you're going to talk on page two. You're going to just tell us, like Mr. Ed on TV, you're going to tell us about the projects. How come this isn't on the website, so that people could see the progress? There's nothing on the website. We're going to depend on you to talk to us like grandpa talking to the little kids. All I know is that we've got serious work here, you've got two buildings here that are ready to fall, and nobody's doing that. You guys made a big hassle about this fifth drugstore on Fifth Avenue. You had to tear that down real quick, because you've got two buildings here that looks like it's going to cave in on themselves.
And you've done sixty other properties throughout the city.
That's more important there, that's hanging there.
They're all important, every one of them, there's four hundred properties that are important.
That's right downtown.
And we're working on them.
Yeah, you're working on it since March.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make about agenda items? All right, let's continue on then. Does anybody have any correspondence they'd like to bring forth? Hearing none, we'll continue. Slusser, would you like to give us your report, please?
Thank you, mayor. Tonight's agenda, you'll see a discussion for Hoffman Kennels. I just want to point out the council's attention, there's no early termination clause with that agreement. The current agreement expires at the end of this year. If the city would like to continue with Hoffman, probably recommended that we negotiate some form of early termination in that agreement. I participated in a Zoom meeting with the mayor, the city administrator, People's Natural Gas, their council, and PennDOT, just regarding the ongoing progress, lack of progress with the repairs to the gas line down on Schoonamaker Avenue. I just worked with the city administrator on day-to-day administration tasks and personnel issues.
Thank you. Yuri, do you have anything from the city treasurer you'd like to present?
Mayor, city council, and citizens of Manassas, this is my report ending for, ending of August two thousand and twenty-three. Current garbage fees, current revenue. August, we received one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, year-to-date, three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Budget amount, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Delinquent garbage fees, August, we received four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Year-to-date, forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and three cents. Budget amount, eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty. And there was nothing collected from Portnoy in August. Garbage fees collected for next year, twenty-five dollars, year-to-date, one thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Budget amount, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Total for the month of August, the garbage fees, two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, year-to-date, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Budget amount, four hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. City real estate taxes revenue. Current, August, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Year-to-date, one million, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Budget amount, two million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Prior year, collected by the city taxes, received nothing in August, year-to-date, eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. Budget amount, five thousand, five hundred and three dollars. Total year-to-date for garbage fees, one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents. Delinquent city taxes, collected by Westmoreland County, quarterly. We received sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents, year-to-date, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Budget amount, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Total year-to-date delinquent taxes, two million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Distribution is as follows, as of August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. General fund, received one million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Budget amount, one million, four hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Depth service, year-to-date, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Budget amount, three hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Library, received, year-to-date, forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Budget amount, forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. Parks, year-to-date, received one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-six cents. Budget amount, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents. Year-to-date, distribution, one million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents. Budget amount, two million, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Miscellaneous income, real estate transfer tax, August, we received seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Year-to-date, forty-eight thousand, forty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Budget amount, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax, August, seventy-three thousand, seventy dollars and seven cents. Year-to-date, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Budget amount, five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Mercantile tax, August, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Year-to-date, eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Budget amount, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Local service tax, August, we received thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Year-to-date, fifty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Budget amount, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Tax certifications, August, two thousand, thirty dollars. Year-to-date, seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. Budget amount, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Municipal lien letters, August, received one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Year-to-date, eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Budget amount, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Line usage account, we received nothing this quarter. Year-to-date, ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Line usage fees, we received sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Year-to-date, sixty thousand, six hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. For a total year-to-date, it's six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. Mayor, that concludes my report for the month.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report for garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month of August two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. Does anybody have the city treasurer or comptroller's report?
She's going to give that at the next meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. New business, I guess it's my turn to talk about a couple of things. First off, we held several meetings with PNG, the most recent of which had lots of people from PNG, but also included Dottie Staefen of the District Director for Senator Ward, Richard Kitchbaum of PennDOT. PNG had not provided, PennDOT. PNG has delayed reconstruction of Schoonamaker from Ninth Street to Fourth Street, claiming that they needed to have an approved copy of their handicap ramps. Well, it turns out that after pushing them at great length, they finally submitted those to PennDOT. Not last year, not the beginning of this year, but rather this past week. PennDOT said that they would process them as quickly as possible. Hopefully, we will get that redone before winter sets in. Bottom line is Schoonamaker is a PennDOT road, we have very little to say about it. The only thing that we can really do is leverage our congressmen and senators and get their aid, and they're being extremely cooperative to it. They started late summer of last year, and they left the road in horrific condition along Schoonamaker. They left a lot of their open trenches, which were just dug out, and they put gravel in it after putting their pipe in. When it rained, they acted just like French drains, and water ran right into the businesses on Schoonamaker. That was the first problem, we got them to come back and put cold patch on those, on those roads. We got them to come back and put cold patch on them, but the cold patch settled with the gravel. And it got so bad, driving down Schoonamaker, there was a sharp lip on the road, and it damaged a couple of cars. We had our local streets department come and put more cold patch on that to cover it up. It happened to be Labor Day weekend, and they didn't have anybody at PennDOT, or PNG, that was responding. So now, they're working from Fourth Street to Oneida. Fourth Street to Oneida, yesterday was a dust bowl, it was horrific. There was dust everywhere, you couldn't, you didn't want to park on the road, you didn't want to walk on the sidewalk as a car went by, it'd kick up dust. They, after complaining this morning, they've since cleaned that up and so forth. It's really only our senators and congressmen, as I said, that have any leverage on this. I'm really hoping that we can request from Senator Ward to push them to pave curb to curb, and as a result of all the headaches and problems that they've caused Manassas. But they're not the only game in town that we're working with. Pennvest is our Phase Four sewer project. That happens to consist of Ninth Street, Reed, Delaware, and a few, and that's really about it. The bottom line is, they completed the Ninth Street, and they repaved Ninth Street. But you look at what they did, it became very obvious, and they've been telling us this all along, that they finance sewer projects, they do not finance repaving projects. What they authorize is repaving where they actually dug up the road, and one foot on either side. So what you end up with is a two-lane road, like goes up the bottom of Ninth Street, the lower part of Ninth Street, and you've got one that's got nice pavement on it, and one that's the old pavement. The problem being, when you come to plow those roads, it's going to be horrific problem. I'm really afraid that it's not going to survive. So long and short of this is, I've been constantly in communication with our CDBG consultant, Walt Haglin of Urban Design Ventures. He has a possible solution. Now, we held a first public hearing of the use of two thousand and twenty-three funds for CDBG, and we included some money for roads. Well, this is a perfect application. You can use CDBG funds for reconstruction of roads, you cannot use CDBG funds to patch roads, patch potholes in roads, which is kind of interesting. So you can replace the entire road like we did on Euclid, like we're going to do on Third Street, but what I want to do is to work with our engineering and so forth, where we lay a mat over the concrete, put a two-inch top coating across the entire thing, and provide the lower part of Ninth Street with curb-to-curb paving. So with that, let me just wind this up with a real quick, two-minute show of what it means when we're doing Third Street with the sewer project. Over here, we have some video I wanted to rub through for you real quick. It's only going to take a couple minutes, but I think you'll find this interesting. First off, this is a seventy-two-inch line that runs right down the center of Third Street. And they've got a camera, the robot camera that goes through here. Look at this hole that's in the side of the wall right here, and this is one of many, but there. There's just this gaping hole in the side of it. Now, they tried to take their little robotic camera and continue on down the way, and they fall in the bottom of this. The bottom of the pipe is gone. This is horrific problem here. They actually send a guy down there, and they'll catch up. And they go on down the pipe, but the pipe is lined with holes in the bottom, holes in the side, it's a problem. Normally, you'd do a reconstruction project, and you would actually have to go up and dig up the entire road and put in new line. That would be phenomenally expensive. So what we've really done is we're working with a company that does spin cast concrete. Now, here's a hole in the side of the road, the pipe, the guy goes down in there, he's working from inside a seventy-two-inch pipe, picks a twelve-inch pipe that runs alongside of the pipe that had failed. Both pipes had failed right there. I feel for this guy. Sitting, now, this is what it looks like after they get through. They send this machine through it, and it's spin cast concrete through that thing. It cleans up the bottom of the thing, and they've already passed some water through it, so it's damp through there. But you can see that it looks wildly different from what it looked like before. There's how they're feeding the camera. But the bottom line is, this is what we want. They are able to repair that line, they're able to repair the holes in the sides, holes in the bottom, and everything else without digging up the road, without replacing the line, but rather using this contraption that does a spray concrete. This spray concrete, as I'm told by our engineering, will last about fifty years. So fifty years from now, they're going to be doing, at least a minimum of fifty years. Fifty years from now, they'll be doing something again, that's beyond anything that we've done. With that. With that, I'd like for somebody to take over some motions that I've got here, if they would. She moved back to her regular spot.
Was it something I said, Lois?
Huh?
Was it something I said?
Something you did. We'd like to make a motion to approve requisition number ten and certificate in total amount of four hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cent for the Phase Three A and Phase Three... And Phase Three B work performed during the month of August twenty-two, twenty-three. The breakdown pursuant to Section Ten of the loan agreement for invoices are delineated for payment as follows. Construction Phase Three invoice for services performed, eight five, two thousand and twenty-three through nine one, two thousand and twenty-three to WEC Inc. In amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cent. Resident project representative invoice one for the period of eight twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three through nine one, two thousand and twenty-three to WEC Inc. in amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Sewer rehabilitation Phase Three A cured-in-place pipe, eight inch to twenty-four inch, for the period of eight twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three through eight thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three to Inside Pipe Contracting LLC in amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cent. Sewer rehabilitation Phase Three B centrifugally cast concrete pipe, thirty-six to eighty-four inch, for the period of eight fourteen, two thousand and twenty-three through eight thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three to MCSP in amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents. All invoices and payment-related materials are attached to this agenda as Exhibit C. It doesn't say Exhibit whatever.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Aye.
Motion by the City of Manassas to authorize the Police and Civil Service Commission to authorize the testing processes for a new full-time officer within the City of Manassas Police Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Aye.
Motion to authorize advertising for the available position within the Streets and Parks Department of the City of Manassas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to transfer property at four seventy-four Motherall Avenue, twenty dash oh two dash oh seven dash oh dash one thirty-seven, and four fifty-six Motherall Avenue, twenty dash oh two dash oh seven dash oh dash one thirty-nine, to the redevelopment authority of the City of Manassas for the suggested sale to Erica Davis, who has maintained those properties and lots for the past thirteen years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski. Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Mark Galper from the library board of the City of Manassas for his term of service, which is set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Just a comment, I'd like to thank him for his service.
Excuse me?
Just a comment, I'd like to thank him for his service.
Absolutely, thank you. Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to advertise for position on the library board of the City of Manassas for a term of service to begin immediately upon appropriate approval by council, and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Motion to permit the Civic Center of the City of Manassas to hold a vendor show on Saturday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, from twelve PM to six PM for a craft food and entertainment vendor showcase as a fundraising event for city civic center programs and operations. The city will also develop a contract and vendor's agreement for this event.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Orchowski to give us his report.
Thank you, mayor. Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general account in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Parks Fund Account in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars, thirty-three cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Rec Fund Account in the amount of six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Aye.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the Liquid Fuels Account in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as Attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
And make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund Account in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. All invoices are attached to this Attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer seventy thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ten cents to the payroll account for the general, to the general, from the general account, excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Make a motion to add two thousand dollars from the general account to the healthcare account, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor.
Aye.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Orchowski.
Yes.
Mayor Mojer.
Yes.
Before I get into the other items, mayor, these are the balances in each account. ARP Fund has two hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. Line usage has seven hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. The Grant Fund has fifty-four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-one cents. Parks has fifty thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Depth Service has one million, forty-six, forty-six, eight, twenty-five, sixty-nine. Refuge has one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-four cents. Healthcare has four thousand, two hundred and six dollars and thirty-four cents. Payroll has seven thousand, ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Fire Escrow has twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Liquid Fuels has one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Recreation has four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, seventy-two. And the General Fund has five hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents. That's that report, mayor.
Thank you.
There's a discussion about Hoffman Kennels, or?
Yeah, the lawyer compared that.
Way to go, Joe. Works for me. Ricky Dick has informed me that he would like to have the Halloween Parade on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, commencing at six-thirty with a lineup in. Ah, this is wrong. That's doubled, okay. Lining up at six-thirty and the parade's to begin at seven o'clock. The parade will commence and finish at the Manassas Emergency Medical Facilities on Donner Avenue at the end of town and I believe it starts at first and dawn.
I'm sorry?
There's a council meeting that night.
Yep. Better change.
You better be out there throwing candy then. One of the two. It's safer to be out there throwing candy. Well, there's a discussion here now, isn't there?
Is there any chance he would be able to do this on Friday as opposed to Thursday?
The Castle Bloods open on Friday, Saturdays, Sundays, that's his, that's his thing so.
So Wednesday possibly?
I don't know that answer. Can we just move?
Well, since it's a discussion, we can, we can, we can further zero this in.
Does anybody feel anything indifferent to move the council meeting to Wednesday?
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
I mean, I think.
We'd have to advertise it.
Just advertise it.
We'd have plenty of time to advertise it.
Yeah, advertise it, move it to Wednesday and.
Counselors, that is okay. Perfectly acceptable.
One of the things that we need to do in conjunction with that meeting is also have another C D B G thing. In fact, it needs to be done beforehand. We were going to do a C D B G public hearing on the Wednesday, we need to move that to a Tuesday, so.
All this for special interest, right?
No, all this for Halloween.
What is Halloween, whatever you got into your work?
Okay, so we'll pursue some of those things and see if we can get it worked out.
What are we going to do with Hoffman's there?
Did you want to have a discussion?
The contract doesn't expire till the end of the year, so you do have some time. If you want to put out another R F P. for other entities or?
Will that, will we get any other responses?
We've already got a couple people that are interested.
Oh, then I think you should put out R F Ps.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Does that require a special motion?
Well, I don't think we could, we could bring that up.
Next time?
Next meeting.
Yeah, put it on the agenda for.
Just as an R F P. and just be done with it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. Uh, the City of Manassas would also like to announce that its trick-or-treat will be on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. We don't have a council meeting. From six to eight P M. And I will mention one of the, can I mention it? Okay. We'll mention one of the things, it didn't make it on the agenda because it'll have to get voted on next meeting because it didn't make it. And we've had the request that the trunk-or-treat happen on that exact same Saturday, but from two to four. So it will probably be a lot of easier for the transition for the children. Be in their outfits, go to the trunk-or-treat. Wind down for an hour and then wind back up after a trick-or-treat, so.
Get it all done in one day.
Yes, so we can vote on their request because it didn't make the agenda this time, but I wanted to mention it anyway so people would know ahead of time.
Yeah, the Salvation Army would like to do it at the same time and I think they would like to cooperate with us and probably do it at the same place, but they were talking about Third Street, we'll iron that out.
Whatever. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lois, would you like to give us your report, please?
If I may, I'd just like to defer my report until the next meeting.
Okay. John, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, citizens of Manassas, I will go ahead and abstain from giving my report for this meeting, but I will go ahead and just talk over a few things. I've been told, and I was working with Mike, that I was informed that we're having some issues with the generator, that it's not working for the fire station down.
It's never worked.
So it's still not, okay, so.
It's been repaired though, hasn't it? I talked to Chief today who indicated.
Oh, was it ever repaired that?
It was repaired, it was recently repaired, yeah.
Then what happened to it?
It's, it's, it seems to be running, we haven't had a.
Because, I know, because, okay, because Joe said he was mentioning that they're having issues with the doors. And that's the next question or the next statement I want to get to, too, is when they sent an email that there's some repairs to at the building that needs finished, like there's some issues with the toilet, toilets, I should say.
The email came from Joe.
Yeah, I forwarded to me. They're having issues with the, let's go through it, there's five, what is it? The men's locker room urinals, two that need fixed. There's some, a women's locker room toilet that needs repaired. There's issues with the garage doors opener, openers that need serviced. Remote openers are not working at the time. Truck bays or overhead radiant heat has not been serviced since installed. Do not, do not work properly most of the time. Heat shields are loose and could possibly fall. So I don't know if we can get someone down there to start looking at these issues.
I thought we were working on this project, but apparently I talked to Steve Gators, the president, last week and I resubmitted to Mike the list. We're having trouble apparently getting someone to come in and take a look at it.
Okay.
Maybe what we need to do is look elsewhere. I actually told Mr. Gators, since he's a repair kind of person, construction, that sort of thing. Could he look into giving us some quotes? Because if we can't get whoever we normally do to come in to do it, I mean, this has been going on for how long now? Months.
Me and Mike have been talking about this for months.
I mean, it's, it's been months and, you know.
So I prom, I just promised those gentlemen, too, that this would just be brought out the open and shined to the light, that we are looking into it, that it is not being covered underneath.
If we can't get our normal guy in there, we need to get someone else.
We, we met today, or I met today with Steve, we agreed to all of this and indicated that if I can't get somebody tomorrow, we're going to move in different directions. On the plumbing, the lights and garage-related activities are being looked at and bid at the moment. So those are taken care of, but the, the water and related have to also be, we, we need numbers for that before.
I have a bigger question. We spent some good money to get that generator fixed and we put it on a service contract.
I don't think the generator's done. Yeah, I think it's working according to Chief, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I'm going to check again tomorrow.
Yeah, I was wondering.
You used to have a service contract with Cummings, right?
Yeah.
Really, was it? Do we still?
We still, we still do, we renewed it.
Who did you pay to fix it last time? Was that Cummings?
Cummings, I think.
Yeah, well, they did the one part, yeah.
I don't think it was a mechanical problem this last time.
Realized the problem that the electrician issued it, I, I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then the electrician came out, fixed that, once the electrician fixed it, Cummings came back and re-surfaced it and re.
Right.
So that was last one.
Did they test it?
I wouldn't dare say if you.
That's some, yeah, that's something I'd like to see if they can actually shut the power off to that building and then be able to turn on that generator to get those doors up and run and see if they turn on.
Did we ever get to the point to test it, to test the garage doors?
That's a good question, I'd like to see that happen if feasible.
I don't know what all the, is it only the police station, is it the whole building?
It's, it's the, it's the fire department, it's not the, it's the.
Can we try that tomorrow possibly or?
Test it, yeah, I think we should.
Try to see if we can get those doors up, the bays.
Okay.
And by any means, Mike, too, if you have a moment, if you could just send that list to, make sure that everyone council just kind of has a list so they're, everyone's aware of what's going on, if anyone's, you know, everyone is lease up to stuff. All right, other than that, I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gregor, what is your report?
Uh, I want to defer mine to the next meeting, I do have one comment to make. We are meeting with prior charities, hopefully tomorrow. Around two o'clock, we have an individual coming down. We're going to meet with them, see if we can get moving on.
Bad and cage.
Bad and cage. Looking at their schedule, the way they do things, I don't, I don't expect to get it done this year. I guess they give their grants out in what, April?
They'll approve it at any point before April, but the actual word is April sixth.
Yeah.
I think that's opening day is what they indicate.
So if we can get it approved, maybe we can get it voted on and get it done and they can reimburse us for it.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment.
I'm getting in front of all that. Uh, one question, you were talking about Ninth Street needing repaid, was that just from Schooner Maker to the split or how far?
From, from Schooner Maker to Knox.
All the way to Knox?
Yes.
Now, the reason you dug it up was for sewer work?
Yes.
You couldn't use line usage money to do it?
No.
How come?
Because that was a Penn Vest run project and it had to fall within the Penn Vest guidelines.
Okay. But it's still dug up for sewer.
We can use C D B G funds, yeah, I understand, but.
He's talking about curb to curb.
Yeah, curb to curb.
Not what, not only what they dug up, but everything.
The bulk of the work is there now, you would only need, what, an inch and a half overlay?
Right.
How much could that cost?
I don't know, but we'll find out and we'll use C D B G funds to do that.
Okay, I was just trying to look for a quick fix.
I understand, but line usage is for fixing sewer lines, not for paving.
Thank you, Chief, that's all we need.
The lower part.
The part that's now coming down.
The original lower part.
The original, the lower part.
And that will be, that will be done, too. We got to wait till they're finished with the project up there before we can do that.
They have to finish reading first.
Okay. Besides worrying about pulling off Halloween, how much salt do we have for the winter?
How much snow is on the ground?
How much salt do we have?
How much do we need?
Delmar.
Who can answer that?
Delmar, how many ton do you think we have in there? Three hundred and fifty ton? Can't put much more in there.
Okay, all right, that's all I want to know. Now, how comes nobody from the city goes to the school board meeting?
I go to the school board meetings every time except this last time, I had another meeting at this last time.
Well, they had some sort of Homeland Security cyber terrorist certification and they want to indoctrinate everybody going to school to have a cybersecurity certificate. Okay, so, so I guess we're marching into this digital, digital surveillance society. And nobody could connect the dots. And I told these people, they don't know how to read, think for themselves or do math. And yet we're going to put them in front of computers and give input to Big Brother. I, I don't understand, nobody's teaching what they're supposed to be teaching. And then, I'm watching the news, three weeks ago, the mayor of Cannonsburg came out and he says, I'm not going to tolerate any drugs in the community. What have you done? We've got drugs all over the place and nobody's doing nothing. Now, the police could only do so much, but it's on you, Mayor, you're the one who's the chief. You're above everybody. So what program do you have to keep Manassas safe?
I depend on our police to do that and we've, I know they're.
Oh, don't throw the buck on the police. You're the one that is supposed to have something like that.
The power that I have is with the police, the police have a program that they're working with, yes.
They got two police.
No, they have two policemen on duty at any given time at a minimum, they have many different levels.
You have two policemen. These guys, and if you think that's going to cover it, that's what you're saying, because they're a man. It's on you, you need to hire.
That's right, that's right.
Please do.
Oh, all right. The local department is working, like you said, there are two officers on first shift, usually there's three, but sometimes there's two. I also, we also give the assistance with the Attorney General's Office and the state police, which I know they have their own task force, they do X, Y, Z, and that's pretty much all, I'll elaborate on that. They do a lot of the drugs within the community that it's hard to do in a more controlled vehicle.
Let me ask you a question since you're involved. Would you need any additional police in your department right now? But that's why we, I asked for that.
Are you going to hire somebody?
Got to get the test.
We approved it, we approved it.
That's what we approved.
It's just one person?
That's what's open right now.
I think you need more than one. But, um.
Good question, did you sign up for the drug task force with this thing?
No.
I'm asking you that question.
Yeah, the mayor.
I'm asking you that.
I personally did not, but did you, is there, do you, what's the relationship we have with the state police?
Actually, I live at the state capital with a task force officer that's headed this area. So I know him personally and he, and I got X, Y, Z, he has X, Y, Z. We talk and he does whatever he can to help us out. But did you sign up for it?
Those designated things for drugs in Manassas area.
Absolutely, we.
Designate drug task force, that we always had years before, why?
That's the question, I guess. It's your job, I mean.
I depend on.
Every day you can ride around and just watch the drug deals in Manassas. And you go and look in the paper for.
And there's been several different busts that you've had this year as well. And we're not in it.
But we don't know that though, because we never read about it, we don't know if there's been drugs.
We got, we got a fake, a fake newspaper.
That's right.
And it covers you.
That's all.
And all you, all we know is about this pipe job that's going down because they repeat the same story over and over.
And he got nothing to do with it.
I'll tell you what, they're so known to us through the whole valley with the newspapers, they're not doing what is right for themselves. They're going for us.
I got one more thing.
I wanted to ask Mr. Haris something, you said there was a designated unit?
When Jim Smith was the mayor in prior, uh, mayor, chief of police, when I was mayor twenty-five years ago, but designated drug task force.
Where, where did that come from?
County, state, there was funding.
There was funding?
You're too busy, you go after that funding. It was funded, we busted a lot of people and we didn't have the traffic then that we have now.
He's too busy doing bread and circus.
Is there something out there we could look into?
There's a county drug task force also. I have officers that are on the task force with, that's with the Attorney General's Office. And, you know, that's, whenever they work their duties or whatever, you know, whatever they do, the city's reimbursed there.
Okay, this task force that he was talking about, it's no longer available?
It's available, but what it is, excuse me, chief. The money that they did off of these busts comes right back to the city and refund the same thing over and over. We are not doing that, have been doing that for about the last seven or eight years.
We have been doing that. We, we get the.
Not to the entity that you should be doing.
We've got, we've got lots of money over the last couple of years.
This high school kid for eighteen, eighteen years old had a slew of whatever.
Yeah, and when it goes, when it goes completely through the judicial system, we do get that money.
On the Second Street steps of Deconfentanyl. It overdoses in Valley Manor. None of that was in the paper.
Sorry, I don't control the paper.
What do you mean it's alright?
I didn't say it was alright. I said, "Sorry, I do not control the paper."
No, but you control.
They have a lot of control over what goes here. That's what we're all saying.
Um...
Called protection.
Okay, let's continue on.
Okay.
You, you got the podium anyway.
Alright, thank you. We made statements about helping the doors and generators. Do you know that for over a year, the library, when it rains, it leaks? They also got like six other issues, and they were addressing that.
I greatly appreciate you telling me this, and thank you for bringing that up. Actually, I would ask, do we have a list of any issues that's having down the library that's been sent down to the city?
I've not seen one.
I think Dave Zuka talks to you.
He never gave me a list of such things.
And he hasn't sent a list to me either.
Okay, but every time it rains, I got a big bucket.
If he hasn't sent a list, he hasn't sent a list to anyone.
Well, I'm glad you brought this up to our attention. I'm sure that this will probably be addressed.
Yeah, and the library is important.
It is, it's the staple of our city.
Yeah, and then one last comment. You guys are supposed to represent the majority, the majority, not a minority. And every time we just have these bread and circus, there's hardly anybody there. The average working Meneson people are not there with their kids. So who are we trying to please? Tell me that. If we're gonna be pleasing small segments of minorities, then let's have Chinese New Years. Let's have the American Indian Reservation. We could go on and on. Your duty is to the majority taxpayers. That has to come first. That's all I know.
Thank you.
My name is Pina, forty-five Montraver. Who's in charge of the, I know who's in charge of the police department, I think it's you, right?
I read the.
Congratulations, John.
They fall underneath some jurisdiction. They're, I mean, they are underneath the mayor, but I read the reports, and I work with the chief, there's issues.
And the code enforcement?
The code enforcement's fine.
Okay. When the last time you got a report from the code enforcement?
I read the report.
When the last time did you get a written report from the code enforcement?
I get a written report.
Can you pass it on to us and see what they're doing on a, I know it can't be done on a daily basis, but on a monthly basis, it should be done.
Did you read one last month?
Yeah.
Last meeting?
Yeah, I read it at the meeting all the time, so.
It should be a monthly report, passed on of what they're doing. You got two code enforcement officers on duty.
I read a report every month. I think I, we just.
I don't, I believe you read it. I like to read it, too. I don't see nothing of what they do. I don't see nothing of what they do. All I can tell you is, when I go through Meneson from the main drag coming from the Nora, all the way to the other end, and if you go up in the hills, it's a shame.
I think as we touched on this on the last meeting, a lot of it, though, too, is set in, in the judicial system. We've mentioned this before.
Well, that's what I like to, I like to have a report. How many times have you taken it to the judicial system? Because there's other way of doing it. What it, you know, telling us that there's a lot of judicial system that you gotta go through, but don't show us.
I'm not sure what you mean, you know, what other ways of doing it.
His report includes the number of citations that are issued by code enforcement every month.
Could you, could you make that available to us?
You wanna provide?
I can print out how many citations we write out to people. I even give out a police citation report.
Yeah, because the guy behind my house finally did cut his grass.
But my question is, how detailed do you want it? Do you want, like, what information do you want besides the number of citations?
I'd just like to know who you cited.
Well, I don't.
I'm sure that's right.
I mean, you know, that's not, it should be a printer. Okay, because it tells me, this is what I got. The, the guy on Montraver cut the grass twice in three years. Okay? The bush behind him, which is still there today as we speak, it's right behind my house. But forget about my house. Things are looking up. You know, other than, the rest of Meneson sucks. Okay, in terms of what the code enforcement are doing.
My question, I think we're getting a little bit off topic. What do you want to see in the citation? Because I'm not sure if we can put folks, are we allowed to put names on there? What, what details are you asking for?
What part of English did you miss that I, that I learned?
I think you kind of drove, I think you kind of drove off on the topic, and I just didn't know what you were meaning to.
I'm gonna make sure you are sure.
Please, thank you.
Okay, I wanna make sure you are sure again. Citation are given by the, first of all, they're taken by the, the code enforcement into the magistrate, correct? And then the magistrate has a hearing, right? I like to know those. Who are they, and how many they are? Is that clear?
We'll look in that.
Okay, 'cause I think, not only to me, I think it should be given to every one of them. Okay, that's, that's one. But I'm going back to my house. They cut the grass up front finally, and if you look, it's a better job than it looked before. But the last time I looked, I think I owned the house, my family owned it for forty, fifty-some years. I owned it for the last seventeen, twenty. The, the back used to be, the hedges used to be four feet high. Two years ago, they were ten foot high. Right now, they're fourteen foot high. And I mentioned that to your current officer, when's he gonna tell the guy to cut the hedges behind? That's a, that's a question. I'm gonna give you another answer. You know when people's gas was doing the gas line on Scootlemaker? You stood there and said that they were gonna blacked off from sidewalk to sidewalk. And when they didn't, all you did was, oh, they didn't do it. You were involved in that just as well, 'cause you questioned that just the same.
You're right, we can't, they, they are bided by the state regulations. That's the state's road.
Our regulations say it's curb to curb, alright? The state doesn't. It's a lane.
Well, what I'm saying is, he said he was gonna have it done from curb to curb. I just heard him say fifty years from now, we're gonna see those pipes, still gonna be in existence. First of all, I hope you're not around by that time. Okay? But don't say things that you don't mean, or you don't know.
Those are things that I get back from engineering.
And you're already on that page, okay? But I'm gonna ask one more question. Did you learn anything from Randy, the guy that ran the dog show this past week? Or Cheryl, who hit that, that little shindy a couple of weeks ago? Did you see the turnout they got? I'm sure you didn't go through either.
I went to both.
You know what? That's what you say. I don't believe you, because you do nothing but lie. That's all you are. And I want to tell you something else, about the fake newspaper that you got. We're tired of listening to this stupid roadwork that you keep going back to it every two weeks, that the newspaper covers you and tells you what a great job you're doing. Well, you suck. Okay? That's number one. I think you, you need to get off it, and if the paper wants to serve, the newspaper wants to serve.
I'll tell you what, down the road here, down the road here.
If the newspaper wants to serve the people of Meneson or the Mon Valley, they should print what really needs to be printed, the truth.
I don't have any control over them. But down the road here, when you drive by cliffs, there's a sign on the fence, and I'm sure you've seen it.
What's that again?
When you're coming down Donner, towards this building here, you go past Cleveland Cliffs, there's a sign on the fence. Have you looked at that sign?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, you need to pay attention as you're driving down the road. There's a sign.
I pay attention to you, and you know, do a damn thing. I pay attention to you. You're being run, you're being run by a bunch of idiots.
Go read the sign. It says, "All hands on deck. Work together." If we all do that.
You don't work together with nobody.
Come help us, come help us.
You don't work together with no one.
Help me, help me.
How come you didn't work together with all the people that put things together, that make it work? You work with the same three stooges.
Come help me.
No, I won't, listen, I gave you money to run, remember? And I told you, run it on your own. I didn't say have your stooges running for you. I said, "You run it the way you're supposed to be," and you did not. I gave you money for that. I wasted my damn money.
Okay, fine. Are you done?
You got the stuff out of Scootlemaker. That's the same thing that's gonna happen with a pipe. The same old BS.
Well, you saw, I gave you before and after. That is a done deal.
It's such a humbug, man. It's not even funny. It's a joke. You can't put a goddamn fishing contest together, then nobody shows up. Nobody has any respect for you. You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Lacy, sixteen, twenty-four, Maple Avenue. I just have a comment, and I also have a question. I think it was the last council meeting where you had taken money that was designated for Tenth Street and gave it to Third Street. And tonight you said something about the twenty-three CDVG money that was gonna be used to pave a road. What happens to Tenth Street?
Tenth Street, you know, the worst part of Tenth Street goes down to Westmoreland County Housing Authority down there, which they're vacating. There is nobody that lives on the bottom half of Tenth Street, which, which is really bad.
But it's been.
How much money should we spend on that? Tell me.
It's part of our city.
It's part of our city, but how much money should we spend on a dead-end road?
But it's been like that for fifteen years.
And it's only.
It was like that when it was a population up there at Highland Manor.
And Westmoreland County Housing Authority should have maintained it. They were the only user of that road.
Are you telling me that Tenth Street is an issue with Westmoreland Housing Authority?
I'm saying there's nobody that lives on that part of Tenth Street.
They're still using that first section as you come into Tenth Street. There's still people living in that first section. So you better figure out how to get money to pave the road. That's what I'm saying. 'Cause you took it from there and took it down to Third Street. And you have done that for Westgate, ever since I moved back here, Westgate has not benefited, nothing from the CDVG money as long as I've been back.
Well, that's what we're trying to do on Ninth Street.
But what happened to the years before? You neglected our side of town. I'm sorry to say that. You have neglected Westgate area.
How much money on, on the Madison Park? How's that?
Well, that's because Lois, and me, and other people that live over there have been on your back about it. So don't use Ninth Street Park as doing us a big favor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and another thing, too. This comment goes to Chief Yuha. Where is our security guard that Monday, up at the high school?
That's why councils should be going up there.
I do.
Do what? What do you do? Just sit there and you don't challenge them. You gotta challenge them.
No, we, the people, need to challenge them.
Amen.
I'd like to see the code enforcer certificate. Is he certified?
Excuse me?
Is the code enforcer certified?
To do what?
As a code enforcer.
Well, there's many different duties he does. The duties he does, he is certified to do. Go ahead.
He's not a building code official. That mean is, he's not enforcing the Uniform Construction Code. He's a code enforcement official. There's real, no real certifications for that process.
We have K-two engineering.
Under the Charo administration.
K-two engineering provides the construction.
That individual might have been the UCC, the building code official. He's in charge of issuing building permits, making sure buildings are up to code, that sort of thing. What Mr. Davis does, he's the code enforcement official. He's looking at property maintenance, high grass, weeds, things of that nature. Parts falling off of buildings that are under the International Property Maintenance Code. Two different things.
My name's Ed LaFever. I'm on Keystone Drive. Mr. Mayor, I want to read a letter sent to the editor of the Mon Valley Independent, but was never printed. It's in reference to the two letters I gave you.
Okay.
What I gave you were comments on some of the messaging that came out of City Hall. So could I indulge you by reading my letter to the editor of the Mon Valley Independent, which she didn't print, in relationship to these two letters I gave you?
Go for it.
Okay, I had to start with an introduction. And here's how I started it. This is to her. You may know this already, the state-owned newspaper in Russia is TAS, the Russian news agency. But what you may not know is that there are approximately fifteen other newspapers in Russia. And do you think their editors and what they print are in the control of President Putin? They must be. Putin's secret police, no doubt, keep their eyes on editors that try to undermine state propaganda. Now, in relationship to the Mon Valley Independent, the Mon Valley Independent is not a state-owned newspaper, and there are no secret police lurking around. But the owner and his editor are banning any criticism of policies issuing from the mayor and the council of Meneson. No editorial or article in the Mon Valley Independent ever has been critical of Mr. Mayor's, Mr. Mosher's actions and decrees. Now, if I'm mistaken, someone needs to refer me to the edition of, of the newspaper. It appears that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it appears that you're correct all the time, and that is not true. I understand that some letters to the Mon Valley Independent use language that should not be printed. But I have used appropriate language, never vulgar or gross, to convey my thoughts about the messaging coming out of City Hall. I wanted to quote, I want to quote the following that applies to a free press. And it comes from Article nineteen of the United Nations. Article nineteen reads, "Everyone has the right to freedom of opinion and expression." This right includes freedom to hold opinions without interference and to seek, receive, and impart information through ideas through any media. The United States signed onto that, Article nineteen, "I agree with it, and so do all, but should all Americans." Consider the phrase, "through any media." Is not, is not a newspaper part of the media? In a, if a reputable owner and the editor of the local newspaper wishes to serve democracy, they would, they would be willing to publish those letters voicing approval or criticism of decisions made or planning to be made in the future by local government officials. Residents of a community need to know the views of their fellow neighbors on issues expounded by these officials. And the best vehicle to do this locally is the local newspaper. Stated again, Mr. Delfonso and his editor has banned any letters to the Mon Valley Independent criticizing, critiquing Mayor Mosher's administration. This is pure authoritarianism and should not be tolerated in a democratic republic. And let me end with this. And this is actually to the journalist that reports here. "The official agenda outlined for council meetings ends with adjournment. But before that, comments from the public are permitted. Therefore, official council business..." I'm sorry, official council business includes public comments, and these are never, never included in the article reporting on the council meetings the next day in the Mon Valley Independent by the journalist. So I should call her comrade journalist. I'd like to see a letup on this banning of any criticism or even any adulation of the mayor and his council. Someone brought up the limited reporting on incidents that never appeared in the news. This is wrong. This is, this, we live in a democracy. Owner and his, and his editor should not refuse my, my, my letters, which are totally, totally free of any bad language. I just think, I think it's, it's a controlled system, almost like Russia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one positive note. I thanked the mayor tonight for not having that stop clock. I really appreciate that. So I'm glad to get that out of your system.
Can I say one, can I say one more thing that I left out, that you brought up? Were you telling me that the, the code enforcement, his job is only to make sure the grass is cut?
That's not what I said.
Would, explain, tell me one more time.
Which part?
The, the whole part.
Sure.
He enforces what's called the International Property Maintenance Code, okay? What Mr. LaFever was asking about was the building code official. Two different aspects. The code enforcement officer is responsible for property maintenance issue, high grass, weeds, whether there's issues that are wrong with the house, not structurally, but maybe you have gutters falling off your house, broken windows, those sorts of things. Clear enough?
Yeah, I understand. So we're paying two people to do that, to make sure the grass is cut?
Two part-time people.
Pardon?
They're two part-time people.
But we still pay, what is the total pay?
Fourteen dollars an hour, I believe.
So the code enforcement gets fourteen dollars an hour?
I believe so.
They're both getting the same, it'd be twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Twenty-eight dollars an hour?
Yeah.
So what is, you should know how much you're paying them, right? My, my whole thing is this. If their job is only to code enforce if a pipe fell off, you know, the, the roof, the gutters or whatever, and, and the grass is high, we're paying two people to do that job?
Lots of it.
I tell you what, you give it to me, I do it for nothing. And I'll do a job.
Okay.
Okay? If you want me to help you clean that shit up, you, you spoke, right? Give it to me. I'll show you how to get it done. Other than just walk around with a cup of coffee inside a cart, two people run around together. 'Cause I was told, that's all it does, drink coffee. I say, "I don't know. I don't see it." I leave Meneson. I said, I don't know. I don't see it. I'll leave Menneson early in the morning, come back late in the evening. That's all I gotta do.
Anybody else have any comments?
Tim Bergen, Pastor Christian Center Church. Um, a, a couple of things. Number one, to speak to the code enforcement officer, I have a restaurant here in town. He comes, he has to inspect the restaurant to make sure it's up to code, to make sure that's part of what his job is as well. So, you know, I appreciate that, because we wanna make sure that we're sanitary, that nobody will get sick, that everything is up to snuff and things like that. So, to defend that position, it's, it's more than just watching, you know, cutting grass, this, that, and the other.
And I apologize to Mr. Davis. I did forget that he does do the health permits for the city.
Right, because we've, you know, we have to do that to make sure...
Does he have the paperwork?
I believe he's...
Don't I have the podium? I have the podium.
Yeah, he's, he's worked with the...
Listen, I, I heard you, what you said. Yeah, I'm asking him, but does he have the...
No, but what I'm saying is, I have the podium. That's, that's Robert's rules of order. It's that when I have the podium, I have the podium. Okay, you can speak, you can come back and speak once I'm done speaking. But to speak out of order is out of order, okay? So please. Secondly, please, well, I'm, I'm glad, all I'm asking you to do is obey the law. You're, you're so important about the law. Excuse me, sorry. Uh, second thing, um, I'm not a Halloween fan at all. I have never celebrated it. My children have never celebrated it. But I know how important it is to the community to do things like that. And while there might not be a return on financial, financially, there's a return for public relations. There's a return for building community. There's a return on people, you know, seeing one another, coming out together, being together. Those are things that help build hope and build community. So I, you know, I just wanted to, not to, once again, I'm not a fan of Halloween in any way, shape, or form, but, but the idea of building community is an important thing, and, and I would say that from, from that perspective. And secondly, or thirdly, I do wanna thank this council and the mayor and everybody that works in this community. We are, you know, trying to work in other communities as well, and the difficulty and the struggle in those communities. I know that this city has struggles. I know it has battles, and I know that you're fighting every day to try to make it better. Are you perfect at what you're doing? No. Are any of us? No. But I wanna, I wanna be on the side of someone that's encouraging you. Yes, we've got a lot to do. There's a ton of things that need to be done. Drug enforcement is a big, you know, is a big concern. I don't wanna see kids where, we have even, it's funny that even right now, we have Celebrate Recovery happening in our building and dealing with, trying to help people recover, trying to help people go through. So we're looking for, from our standpoint, ways to deal with it, to help the police, to help others. And so I understand that you're doing that, and, and I know that there are a lot of things we can complain about. And, and everything that these gentlemen have said, I, I hear, I understand. Everything Linda said, I understand. I'm, I get it. I understand. But I also want to encourage you that, that you're fighting, fighting the good fight, and to please keep it up. I have the right to say that as much as everyone else has the right to, to complain, so just wanted to encourage you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now you can have it.
I pay taxes in Menneson. He doesn't. I pay cool taxes in Menneson. He doesn't. He lives in Valverde. I don't. I live in Menneson. He don't tell us what to do. He pays zero taxes. Go to Menneson, go to Rustraver County and talk to them about how good you are, because we're the only one who is giving you a free ride in Menneson.
I don't think we need to resort to personal attacks here. Let's be respectful.
I am respectful.
No, you're not being respectful to him. You're not being respectful to anybody in this room.
Why? Why? Because I'm telling the truth?
No, you're not. You're personally attacking him.
I pay taxes.
I'd like to make a motion.
September fourteenth, September second.
I pay taxes. He doesn't.
But you're not being respectful at all. You're never respectful when this is being ever.
I pay taxes.
You're not respectful.
No, I don't, why? What, what, what's so unres, what did I do that is so unrespectable? Tell me what it is unrespectable.
You're disrespectful.
Yeah, I, I think you're disrespectful right now to me.
Then I apologize for it.
Well, I don't have to apologize to him.
I don't care.